Okay, welcome everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome you all to the 2025 Candidate Forum sponsored by the Wallowalla Community College and the Wallowalla Union Volunten. Special thanks to the college for the use of this wonderful fine arts auditorium tonight. My name is Rob Leffler and I am your emcee tonight. I'm a nearly twenty year resident of Wallowalla and currently on the executive team at Baker Board, where I've worked for the past decade. I formerly led the UP. My role tonight is to lay out the rules of the forum, to introduce our moderators, and provide some context about what city government does. Many feel that local government has the biggest impact on our day-to-day lives. A word about the 2025 general election, which is November 4th. Ballots are going to be mailed out soon, on October 17th. You're going to have until November 4th to get them mailed in. You might have wondered why none of the races featured tonight were on the primary ballot. That's because Washington is a top-two state, where the top-two vote getters, regardless of party, are on the general ballot. If only two people filed to run, they are automatically advanced to the general election. These are nonpartisan races, so if there is a partisan element to them, it won't be reflected on the ballot. Races on the ballot where only one person is running unopposed are not part of tonight's candidate forum. The races that are featured tonight are two for college, play-city council, and three for Wallowalla State Council, which we're going to start with. We're fortunate to have all the candidates for a representative here. Since Robbie Alawat is not able to attend, he has asked Jeff Duquette to read his statement from him. The format allows fifteen minutes for each position. We'll vote seven and a half minutes to each candidate. All will be asked the same questions, which they received a week ago. The questions were prepared by our two moderators, Barbara Clark and Dominic Gallo. Starting with Barbara, she was first elected to the Wallowalla City Council in 1997, where she served twenty years. She was mayor for two of those terms. Barbara co-founded Neutral Ground Mediation Service, where she was principal mediator for thirty-five years. Dominic was first elected to the Wallowalla City Council in 1992. He also served twenty years. He also served as mayor for two terms. He is the CEO and managing partner of Snyder Chris Ellis Paper here in Wallowalla. Time speakers tonight are Kerry Ossington and Jim Peterson in the back. They're going to show a yellow card where a candidate has thirty seconds, and they're going to show a red card, and the candidate has to stop. So the format tonight, in the interest of time, is not allowed for questions from the audience or online. You are welcome to remain after the break and talk with the candidates further if you're here in the auditorium or out, uh, out of the lobby, whether you're in your line of view. This event is being streamed as a webinar and is being recorded. It will be posted online, and volunteer Nora Marie is now getting Zoom for us in the back. Thank you, Nora. So before we get started with the questions, I wanted to share the scope of each city council's basic responsibilities, which is a very long list. It includes economic development, housing, homelessness, supporting local businesses, transportation, traffic, parking, and pedestrian safety, managing road and development, maintaining parks, recreation, and public spaces, basic infrastructure, including water, sewer, and sanitation, public safety, including police and fire services, shared responsibility with the city council or the county, sorry, for important issues such as public health, emergency and disaster preparation, climate resilience and sustainability, protecting natural resources, and hiring and holding accountable a city manager. In addition to that long list, there are always unexpected things that come up, and that gives you a good idea of the many issues the councils deal with at their five-monthly meetings. I will now turn the event over to our moderators, Barbara and Dominic. They are all yours.
Good evening, everybody. And we're going to start at your far right with the position one. And I'm going to start with Rick Eskel. Rick, the first question is, I'd like to ask you to tell us about yourself and why you're running for the city council seat.
I'm running because I care about the people in this community and I am sure that they continue to have good government. I represent the public. That's my job. And I don't represent the city. I don't work for the city. I work for the public. I moved here in 1980 to get a job as a reporter for the Union Volunten. A couple of years later, I fell in love. My wife Jennifer, we've been married forty years. We have two grown married children, not to each other. But my son's married to Jayden Hodenbelts, Tushy Hodenbelts, and my daughter's married to JP Woburn. I worked at the Union Volunten for forty-one years. Ten of those is a reporter, thirty-one is the editorial page editor. I wrote six editorials a week for thirty-one years. It's about ten thousand by my count. And I covered a lot of city issues. And I'm also, part of my job is on the Valley Transit Board. And I want to use that, just the last few seconds, to tell you that one time there was a thirty-five thousand dollar overcharge from Verizon because a computer of the bus ran for a month. And I thought that was outrageous. No one would want to take care of it. I call every Verizon office in America and got it sent.
Thank you. Melissa Shumay. Same question for you. Tell us, tell us who you are. Tell us who you are and why you're running for the city council.
Thank you, Barbara. My name is Melissa Shumay. I am running for position one, Wallowalla City Council. That's the top four. I've had several questions since I've been running. Everybody gets to vote in the general, regardless of which board you live in, so just so you know. I am a burning high school graduate. And until several years ago, I lived within the Columbia watershed my whole life. I spent the last twelve of those as a landowner in various jurisdictions, including the city of Wallowalla. I moved to the county for a job and realized very quickly that this was where my heart was, that I really loved Wallowalla. If you don't know, the Gremonton to Seattle, Washington State ferry is the Wallowalla. There are photos of home on that ferry. And so anytime I would ride the ferry to go to Seattle to do something, it always made my heart hurt. And then I came back for a visit about a year after I moved. Drove into downtown on a perfect fall evening and burst into tears. And I realized I loved Wallowalla. Wallowalla was the home, even though I hadn't yet lived in Wallowalla. I lived in Wallowalla when I worked for the city. But I loved it. I loved the history. I loved our friendly reputation. I loved the agricultural community and all of the agricultural smells. So that's my run. I love public service and I love Wallowalla.
Thank you. The second question, and we'll start with Melissa on this one. What do you think is the most important issue facing the city? And what do you plan to do to deal with?
So I feel very strongly that housing is the very most important issue facing Wallowalla. It's also facing basically everywhere around the country, but here at home, you know, I think that it truly is. All of our other issues can be traced back to housing, anti-development standards. Healthcare jobs are tied to housing. Defining school enrollment is tied to housing. So we need more housing overall. We need housing that's affordable. We need housing that's more accessible. I made a lot of progress on this issue when I worked for the city. I was the main architect of the 2018 zoning reform that allowed for middle housing to be built everywhere in the city. And that was pretty close to first in the nation, certainly first in the state. Served as a basis for what the legislature has since adopted. We definitely have plenty of room to go further. I have many ideas. I think that we could explore a vacancy tax or apply on vacant commercial and residential buildings. I think that our short-term rental ordinance needs to be updated. I think that we need to incentivize the use of universal design principles to increase accessible housing. I think we need a rental registry. And I also think that...
Mr. Eskel, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city?
I think it's, we need, right now, it's efficient and effective government. It'll be very difficult over the next few years because the city, like almost every government in this country, is facing some serious financial issues. I want to point out that this is the five-year projections from the, uh, from the city. And it shows that the revenue growth is at two percent over the next five years, but expenditure growth is going to be three point five percent. If that occurs, what will happen is we're going to be in renting in like 2030. And we can't tax our way out of this problem. We need to look now at ways to shore up things to make sure that we continue to provide top-notch services. We want to avoid layoffs. And we want to make sure that our decisions are, are directed specifically in making sure we can continue to fund government. And we do not want to have to, to go into it. Because the 911 sales tax pass, the city's going to have 1.25 million extra dollars. And right off the bat, I think we can use some of that to delay increasing how much we take for property tax each year. That's one step. And we're going to have to take a lot more actions than that, but if we don't do it, one council member can't do it alone. We've got to work together, and I'm ready to do that.
And you will perhaps have a little trouble with our clock in the back.
We're going to use the yellow and red and not have the clock. It's making too much of a disruption.
Okay, that's fine. I was just looking at the clock and see what the, everybody else is in the way. Okay, so, um, the next question is, um, let's see, it's for Rick again. If you're elected, how would you involve those people that you serve in decision-making processes?
Listen, 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 and understand. I think it's critically important to engage the public. And because of my years at the newspaper, that's what I did a lot. And I do it now. I make it a point of asking people what they think and engage people. Also, on the city council, we have some of our consent agenda items. I often ask to have them pulled off the consent agenda and discussed in public so that people will know what it is and perhaps it'll be reported in the paper and people will know what's going on. It's critically important to me. I'm very, very big on public involvement and transparence. You know, when people come to me with any kind of concern, I know if they take the time, that is, at least that moment in their life, the most serious thing they're concerned about. And I treat every request that way. Whether it's for something that could use the government or even if they have a concern about the city, I work to find a problem for them. I just, I think that's part of the job. But again, I work for the people, not necessarily the city government.
Melissa, same question for you. If you're elected, how would you involve those people you serve in your decision-making?
I am a career public servant, as I mentioned. And so much of what happens in government is not well-understood. The approach that I've taken in my career and that I would continue to take on city council is to meet people where they are. So go out to them. Don't wait for them to come to me. And while there, listen and also take the opportunity to help inform and educate about the things that they may have misconceptions about. Because there are unfortunately a lot of that, government's complaints. So that would be really very important for me. I really enjoy having personal conversations with folks and finding out not only what is important to them, but why. But the why is almost always more important, let's be honest. The question that they ask almost always has something behind it. I also would want to be sure to represent everyone, not just the folks who show up at meetings. That is very much a time constraint for a lot of people. If you saw my Union Volunten article for 39 under 39, you might have seen that I also really want to focus on community building. And that's something that I look forward to doing as well.
Okay, our last question for candidates for position one. Starting with Melissa, what would you like to say as a position?
This is obviously a very limited format, so I want to hit a couple of different points. I bring a lot of expertise to this position. I also bring the opportunity for some city-county collaboration of Olympia that we've been trying to foster since I started with the county almost two years ago. I also bring the opportunity for some additional representation on council. My generation is not represented by the municipal. I think one of the most important things as a former staff member is making sure that the city staff feels supported and respected. And it is my understanding, based on a conversation with the city manager earlier this week, that the best word to describe how staff feel right now is "better than law." I want to thank the organizers for putting this together this evening. This was very much appreciated. And I would ask everyone that's here to vote for me, tell your friends and family that you're voting for me and why. If you could share my Facebook page or my website, also with your friends and family. I greatly appreciate that. And also, if it's within your means, donations are appreciated. Thank you so much for being here today.
Rick, your closing statement, please.
Okay. I want to make it very clear that I am for growth and development. I am for thoughtful, responsible growth and development that benefits the entire community. I also want to say that I get things done. I want to use an example. When I, one of my first year on the council, the police body camera were not on the agenda for the budget. I, I found that unbelievable, that in 2022, that was not the case. So I fought, I argued with the city manager. I cajoled and lobbied my fellow council members. Took me several months, but eventually, again, you can never do anything yourself. So I got support along the way. I asked citizens to come in and talk. And we did get it in that budget, and we've had police body cameras since 2023. And I think that's great. I want, I want to say that I have broad support on the political spectrum, from the right to the left, everywhere. And that's because I look at this nonpartisan job and I work at it in a nonpartisan way. I have dozens and dozens and dozens of small donations, although they are hugely appreciated, from local people. I only had one donation from out of the area, and that's my sister who lives in Hawaii. And I ask you for your support. Thank you very much.
Several hours of applause for the candidates. All right, Ben Ramon in position two, Rodney Alawat Jeff Strickler. Mr. Alawat is saying that we need to give him a previous commitment that he has sent a representative. We're going to allow him to spend the three minutes giving his, and then we'll ask the questions of Mr. Strickler when he comes up. So Jim, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Jeff Duquette. I'm here to read a statement on behalf of Rodney Alawat. Good evening, everyone. I hope you are all well, and I'm so glad you're here tonight to listen to this group of candidates who care deeply for our community. As most of you know, I love this community and I work hard for it every single day. I believe that as much as we need long-term sustainable goals and frameworks for our future, we cannot overlook the urgent short-term solutions that our neighbors need right now. True leadership is about balancing both, meeting today's needs while building tomorrow's foundation. We all know the big issues: healthcare, access, diverse job opportunities, and affordable housing. These are not just policy points. They're everyday struggles for many of our families, and they deserve bold, creative solutions. But while we continue these long conversations, our neighbors are also facing the realities of today. These days are getting shorter, the nights are getting colder, and people in our community will be reaching out for food, winter clothes, and help paying their bills. And that's precisely why I'm not physically here tonight. I'm at Wildwood Park collecting food and clothing to deliver to organizations who serve our community directly. Because I believe being a representative is not only about approving budgets or policies, it is also about showing up for people in real time. I know some have criticized my choice not to be here, and I understand that. But I do not believe it has to be either or when it comes to, when it comes to being accessible. People in our community have asked for fresh, diverse options, and I believe that is a point. We want to build trust. We have to be willing to break the mold of politics as usual and open up new ways for people to connect with us and see our hearts for this community. If I win my seat, I will honor the processes of council service. But I also believe it should go both ways. If we want accurate representation, we must reflect the reality of the people we serve. As I said before, we can walk and talk at the same time. The next wave for Wallowalla begins with our youth and young adults. We invest in, we must invest in them now to ensure that healthcare access, diverse jobs, and affordable housing are not dreams, but realities in their future. We must also reimagine our downtown. Not just as a place for tourists or annual events, but as a space where every member of our community, especially our young people, feel a sense of belonging every single day. So while I regret not being with you in person tonight, I'm grateful that you are engaging in this process. And I invite you, if you have the time and capacity, come by Wildwood Park this evening. We'll be there at 8:00 PM.
Jeff, tell us, Warren, who you are and why you're running this evening.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's so great to see all of us gathered here tonight for this important community conversation. Jeff Strickler and I run for two billion and three forty issues, housing and jobs. As a young person, I asked for Wallowalla every summer. And in 2010, I moved my young family here to enjoy all the reasons to be here. Right? All, all the reasons we appreciate this valley. And after a couple of years of living here, though, I looked around and I realized that all of the other young families that we've met, and T-Ball, and Plankton, and playground, things like this, they all moved away. It was pretty straightforward. Like each said, it was because they couldn't find economic opportunities. They needed for their families, and affordable housing was just, you know, it was an issue. And, and that was back fifteen years ago. It's only gotten worse since then. And so I can't stand quietly by and, and not stand up and do something about it, especially given my background. So over the last few years, as I started thinking about this opportunity and sort of preparing for it, I went to work. And so, for example, I served here today on our planning commission, on our race board of Washington State, uh, I'm on the Washington Realtors Legislative Committee, working directly on housing policies and making connections with Olympia. I'm a member of our several organizations like Rotary. And I've been staying on the ladies with our Downtown Foundation. And so I'm very excited to ask for your support and to, to see these candidates with you and see how we can make our community better together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. You're on again. That's our chat this time. The, the second question is, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city? And how would you plan to deal with it?
Yeah, so there's no question. The Thousand Councils are two future wanting issues. And look, if we want to be able to offer youth programs, fight homelessness, or attract more doctors to our community, we've got to focus on economic growth. That's the root of every issue that we're struggling with. You know, for example, when we give people, when we enable new jobs, new career opportunities for people, that's money in their pocket. That's how they're able to buy homes. You can build homes if there's no need to buy them. It starts with jobs. They're interplanted problems. I think too, we've got to look at, we've got to look at our history. And we're looking at companies like Nelson Irrigation or, or, and, and Key Technologies and say, what can we learn from our entrepreneurial past and we can bring into city policy today to move forward? One of the things that I, I hear from you about in the future is we need to put together a city economic development council, okay? We, we've got groups. We've got the port. We've got our chamber. We've got our Downtown Foundation. We have, you know, we, we need to bring them all together to be working towards a common vision and roadmap. And finally, you know, everything we do as a city council, as a government, we need to be thinking about, are we making Wallowalla a business?
Jeff, you're on again. If you are elected, how would you involve those you serve in your decision-making?
You know, at city council meetings, and I hope that all of you come. I mean, I think we're doing this together, but we need to continue to do this. You know, some, some of those meetings are well-attended and some are. But one of the things we hear about is we need more transparency from our government. We want more public input. One of the things that I, I would really like to see happen is a citizen's voice to me, which Jeff was still here. We had a chat earlier, and he shares this with a college student. He's a great example of something that don't gravitate to this town if they're not listening to. And I think if we were to form a sixth of the points to the community that was directly giving feedback on a regular basis from all of the supporters of Wallowalla about our policies and the impact, that would be huge. We're there. You know, we talk a lot about civic education. And I keep thinking to myself, for example, about my own things over in Wauha. Wouldn't it be great if we had a little steam bank so we could say, hey, let's have, uh, let's have the debate club from Wauha come sit in the city council meeting and hear the civic experience and see their democracy in action. And, and, you know, we've had great feedback through our community town hall events and all the awards. I think we need to continue to expand that, probably make it more frequent. When we have events on our main street, in downtown, or at a fair, our city needs a presence there. We need to, and I'm, I'm giving, I'm giving mixed signals between yellow and red, but I would, so I would wrap it up to just say that. Finally, finally, what I would say is, you know, the last few years, I've had literally hundreds of coffees and lunches with members of our community, and I want that to continue. I, I really do want to hear from every single one of you. I, I hope that, we probably won't have time tonight, but I hope over time we are going to connect great, great together and get to know each other, and, and that you can hopefully come.
Your question is, would you like to say anything?
So I'm going to share a secret review there. My campaign has been to every neighborhood in this town at this point. We have been to six thousand doors. And we're not done yet. Look, I'm running to bring more jobs and housing opportunities to our community. These are tremendous challenges. This is not going to be easy. But I've built relationships with our city staff, with the council, in Olympia, with our poor county governments. I've worked hard to try to prepare myself for this role to serve you. Major challenges ahead, and I need us to be partners in this work together. So thank you for your support, and I look forward to coming to feature you. Thank you.
And Dominic suggested, let's have a hand for both of you. Position two. First question is going to be for Carolyn Hall. Carolyn, how senior you are and why you'd help the community?
Well, I did some research. My roots are here. This is my future. My children and my grandchildren live here. My mother's family came here on the Oregon Trail, or around Cape Horn, missing their ship in the eighteen forties. The farm and ranch, the consist of Walawala Valley. My great-grandfather had a few rings stored, I think of third floors. My great-aunts are on the wall, adherent to the farm. The photo is a school, Walawala Symphony, or Stray Me to nineteen twenty-three. I come from a long line of fierce women and higher up. They buried their children along the Oregon Trail. They ran ranches when their husbands and brothers died in World War I, and did not come home. And their history continues to define who I am. My father was a logger and engineer. I know this land, and I have walked the marshes. As the mills closed, work was harder to find. We were essentially homeless. One summer, we lived among the two canals. The summer in my parents called it Can Week, and refused to make any effort of our property. I worked harvest. In the summers, I spent seven years working for the Forest Service and Fire Department. I graduated from the University of Washington in Political Science with a focus in Latin American Studies. I put myself through college to work at the University of Washington College School. I am pretty good at reading minimal reports. I've been for the, I've been at heart in the growth of the logging industry in Walawala for twenty years, in all aspects, giving me a unique perspective here that doesn't exist today in our city council. And I want to make sure that we are creating a sustainable and vibrant community for this law.
Ms. Doherty, same questions. Tell us who you are and why you run for city council.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for being here. Good evening. My name is Stalber. I am your current city council representative of the law. I am your representative for the Walawala Community Police Department as well, and I serve in the executive board EMAC, and have served in a number of other several boards and commissions. I am running for reelection as city council to continue building a strong, prosperous, and resilient community. I am devoted to community service in the spirit of collaboration, grounded in my belief that working together, we can enhance the quality of our lives. For the last four years, I have been building the trusting relationships and work collaborations necessary for us to resolve problems and achieve our goals. In that time, we have passed several ordinances and code updates to support and incent affordable housing. We completed a multitude of public works projects. We designed pedestrian-accessible and bicycle-friendly arteries, ensured the quality of our water, and many other initiatives that enhance our safety and our quality of life. And of course, the full credit without goes to the hard-working employees of the city of Walawala. My commitment is to serve you, creating and implementing pragmatic solutions that address what really you care about most.
You don't use the microphone. You need to keep it this time. Ms. Doherty, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city? And what would you plan to do to deal with it?
Our most important issue now, and for the next several years, is going to be the vitality of our economy. Twenty-five percent of our workforce is employed by government, which faces many uncertainties. There's a large gap between the median household income and the median home price, which prevents many working families and young people from obtaining housing security. Our downtown small businesses are working very hard to remain profitable and viable. Our social services, which depend on federal and state funding, also face many uncertainties. Our growth is stagnant, which places pressure on the health services and retail options that we have available. And sixty percent of the city revenues come from sales, sales taxes and property taxes, which fund the police, fire, water, public works, et cetera. So it is crucial that we focus on building an economic development strategy that helps us navigate towards sustainable prosperity. The best way to resolve this challenge is going to be working together, collaborating across all perspectives and sectors in our community. That is businesses, city, port, county, working together to reignite our local economy and build a plan for long-term, smart, and sustainable growth.
Carolyn, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city? And what would you plan to do to deal with it?
Everything in the city council's comprehensive plan depends on having a strong economy. We need a city council that is focused on growth and provides necessary economic oversight to ensure the best possible outcome. With new businesses, with the creation of more jobs, and with providing economic security necessary to encourage young families to move here, we will all thrive. And I have a plan. Let's start with the downtown. It is the heart of our community and places attracts both residents and visitors. Right now, our downtown is filled with empty, empty, empty buildings. In partnership with property owners, we will provide financial incentives as well as distance incentives to encourage owners to fix up their buildings and ensure their occupancy. Cities like Hamilton and Vancouver are currently streamlining and suspending some of the building codes and providing tax incentives for these businesses. We can implement a vacancy tax to help the city pay for the added services it takes to save our downtown, and make up for some of the lost tax revenue incurred when buildings are unoccupied. We need more affordable housing. There's no doubt about it. Right now, as its owners are constructing condos and apartments in the second, third floors of our community buildings. When people move into town, the new businesses, opening with our assistance and support, will benefit. Occupied buildings will lead to a safer or brighter community. There are currently over two hundred and fifty empty homes, and the red light is on.
All right, Carolyn, good night. This is really the third question. If you're elected, how would you involve those who serve in this decision-making?
Even before launching my campaign, I sought the advice of my friends, my neighbors, and family as to what they needed for their elected representative. The answer was resounding the transparency and more clarity about decisions are made by our city council. I would focus on a multi-channel approach that would utilize social media and email letters to share updates and help. We need to do a better job engaging the public, especially our young people, and ensure that all voices are heard. As a business manager, I discovered that the most successful teams are the ones that know they are partners in decision-making, are being heard, and their concerns and solutions are being taken into consideration. I will serve as a conduit, not only for our families, our young people, and our educators, but the larger valley community. I want to encourage better, sharp partnerships in the valley with the county commission, port commission, and the Forest Service to re-manage and better Walawala Valley. I will seek new avenues of communication with our amazing colleges. Our support in developing new capital incentives and new business opportunities will help that come about. I want to make sure that everyone who wants can find success and sustain our valley. Tipper Meo once said, "All politics is local." To me, that means the bread and butter issues that direct our lives are where I need to focus. It means that local issues are where I can have the most impact. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty, same question. If you're elected, how would you involve those who serve in this decision-making?
An important part of that equation is actually your involvement in advisory boards and commissions for the city, which address issues that inform our decisions. Boards like arts and recreation, bicycle and pedestrian, arts, sustainability, historic preservation, all of those can ensure that you contribute your perspectives and creativity to our work. And we also see potential creation of a youth advisory board to provide input and advocacy for our young residents. We have also begun implementing town hall-style meetings in the various wards. We recently had a town hall in the west ward that allowed me to listen directly to the feedback and concerns of our residents. And of course, the best way is when we sit down or go for a walk and have one-on-one conversations that help me better understand valuable feedback about my home performance, for which I am very grateful. I'm always happy to meet with you. When I, when we listen to each other and understand the humanity in each of us, that is when we truly feel community. Humanity pursuing common goals and committed to make Walawala a place where we all belong, and we are proud and grateful to all of them. We actually have a great challenge ahead. Let's make a commitment to unite and work together for our people and our future generations. I want to represent the aspirations of Walawala residents, focusing on prosperity, affordability, equity, and the quality of our lives. I want to listen and collaborate in resolving the community challenges we face, based on the merit of the ideas rather than ideology or political biases. But more than me, this is about you. This is about the voice that you trust to represent your interests in city council. The voice who can bring humanity and empathy to the audience, who can see the big picture, context, the unintended consequences of our decisions, who can understand a core issue and ignore all the surrounding noises. And a voice who can think strategically on whether the choices that we make today are going to help us attain our future goals. My city council experience, with a strong record of service, with integrity and honesty, my community service, leadership skills, multicultural competence, and the passion to serve, prepare me to represent you and continue this important.
Carolyn, closing statement, please.
I have never run for public office. I'm not a professional politician. I do not take large political contributions from businesses or investors, who will expect something in return. And I encourage all of you to research where our candidates' campaign contributions originate. I believe that I have the knowledge, the commitment, and the passion to help Walawala make the place my great-grandchildren and yours will want to live in. The poverty existing in our community is awful right now, and degrading for all of us. Every person deserves a home, a good education, meaningful work, and the opportunity to bring healthy children into the community we can create if we have the will. Our water resources, our power resources, and our agriculture will protect us now and in the future, but only if we are mindful, resourceful, and visionary. As most of my friends in college will tell you, I'm a crazy gardener. I like nothing more than seeing things grow and thrive, even though some of the results have been rather unexpected. Patience is a virtue. And I think that I have the opportunity and I have the skill and the will to bring a better future for Walawala. And I thank you all for coming. All right, please vote.
That's our round of applause for the candidates. Now, at this time, we're going to make the switch. We're going to have a few minute intermission while we make the switch. Correct? Let's go about five minutes or so. Okay, well, welcome back, everyone. Now, we are going to focus on the two city college place and city council races. So I will turn it back over to our home groups. Thanks, Warren. We're going to start with position one, and Jordan, you're off first. Please tell us who you are and why you run for city council.
Yeah, my name is Jordan Green. I'm a father and husband of three youngest kids. I'm David Laitman, the executive director of Walawala County Police Department. I get my life, work, and mission to find my policies and services. So for me, David, I mean supporting the police in this city. I hope it's toward that same exact calling to the people who carry the police department, so all of them listen to this, and they have this amazing feeling. Part of that is recognizing the need to, sometimes under recognition or underrepresented, to make me feel that I'm helping this community. Often, these are people who are full of open dreams, and they're looking forward to office and home, but it doesn't necessarily mean a couple of things that will be happening around them. And often, it also means the whole community, because while there's so many amazing ways to connect with each other and establish, it doesn't always mean the same thing in all of them. So access and ability to live, and ability to get to this community, might have an opportunity to get out of this. My hope is to go and connect with each other and have capacity to do well. Beyond that, my recognition is that perspectives and experiences are so valuable. We need that to work in the city. It's easy to make, it's easy to make decisions about the context of people around us. So we have to see how those things are working every single day.
John, tell us who you are and why you run for city council.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. I'd like to make everybody feel your level. So we'll start off by saying I'm John Gator, running for college place in the council. Position one. I'm the third trying for office. I'm a transplant. I've been here for eight years. So in that, in that trying for that, I have a pleasure and the honor of being in various municipalities, various states, seeing cultures, seeing how people interact. And I won places at the college place, at state And I've won places at the college place, has taken my heart, focused, and as a result, I found that the need in college to serve college place the best way I know now, that's the city council. As I said, I'm working, I'm a transplant. We have acquaintance here, three kids, three daughters, as well, we have an eleven-year-old, a nine-year-old, and two, and they're glad. And I find myself growing spiritually as a person, as a father, as a college place resident, and it's my honor to serve by the college place the best way that I can.
All right, so the question is, what do you think is the most important issue facing the city, and what would you plan to do?
So there are three major issues we need to talk about. One of the most important is maybe, and that's important, we've heard it on this on this stage at times, that being a college place is more relevant than our college place and council is more of a job. However, that doesn't, that's to take into account that our housing prices, our rent prices, our, there is a larger market gap every year from housing and rent prices to our median average housing. And so how do we tackle? The obvious answer would be let's build, 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 but it's not a simple step. So my plan to be able to put on to the council is to study, learn, understand what our cities have at itself, and have more stability when it comes to affordable housing, or lowering that gap between wages and affordable housing. And then scale that to our city, college places, because we are quite a small area of citizens. So how do we scale, how do we expand, how do we bring more and without fear of impacting the league?
Jordan, same question for you. What do you think is the most important issue facing college place, and what would you plan to do to deal with?
Yeah, for me, it's kind of two comments. I think affordable housing is the thing that is most important, is that it's impressive. And just going to say everything has to be expressed, and you have to work together as a city council, we have to invite melkers and landlords and builders to recognize the power and the model sector, and close conversations as well, and connection and collaboration and understanding. But it also needs support and funding. The beautiful thing about finding a local home is that it generates a bunch of larger kinds of funding from the outside, so we can build something better than what we want to own. And we gather that use those kinds of resources to do that. But in order to do that, you have to have a second home, you have to have a family, you've got to have a strong business, you've got to have tax revenue, you've got to better support the mental businesses that want to make a place here. And it's a lot of opportunity for sales, to actually really out, great opportunity for jobs, for send, thanks in all aspects, both for this, for having them, for helping just what they have, and allows us to do more to effectively manage size and tax revenue as well.
Jordan, if you're elected, how would you involve those you serve in your decision?
Yeah, college place has a wealth of experience, perspective, creative, and tap into. I think that as a council, we have a job that I think in a lot of ways, we have better and better resources than we have. But at the end of the day, I think it's also still important. We have an amazing number of community events that college place runs, and there's nothing that can fix time when you're supposed to be influencing people, because it's not about necessarily the issue that you're speaking about, it's the heart of it. And when it's electronic, when it's online, when it's written, it's a lot of this that part of what's happening, and that allows us to communicate well and form decisions. So my commitment is it is to get out there, to show up, to be present, and to connect with people so I can understand them. But also, finding other ways to get them too, because at the end of the day, electronic communication is more amazing. For those that are introverted, maybe what's spoken toward isn't the strongest way to communicate, but also have the space for that too. And so I recognize that being the kind of person that listens and reads all of that information at any time.
John, if you're elected, how would you involve those you serve in your decision?
Thanks for the question. I think this question does reflect the poor transparency at times. I just want to point out, our college place city council has done really well with transparency, so I want to continue that legacy. It's a trying to make this official speech. I, my metaphorical door is always open. I am available through Instagram, Facebook, you can go to my website, wokkaya.com, it's there, email me at wokkaya@wokkaya.com. I'm open to all forms of communication. I want to hear your thoughts, your opinions, views, hopefully you, change, we make better, we have people who will, we continue that path. Every voice is important to me, and I do not, I'm not here to represent just a single person or a single ideology out here, but they make all the places, and I want to make it very clear, very well known. So I'm probably there, but yeah, contact me at a point, actually, Jordan, at a point, college place has a lot of good, good, solid advocates in the world, and my family and I enjoy it quite a bit. So if you ever sit down there or consult with her or anything, I love base contact. I love seeing integration expressions, kind of giving energy, and understanding where you're going to look at the implications. My door is open, contact.
Jordan, I don't know, Jordan, John.
This will be another short speech. I want to thank you all again for being here. This is my third time to serve college place specifically. I said what I'll say again for college place. My family and I are going anywhere anytime soon. When I say anytime soon, my husband being married to college place. So as a result, I do ask for your support and request your votes, but I also want to add a point something else. I look at this table, I look at this table, college place, I've said before, I'll say again, is very lucky to have these candidates for both this position and position three, so you can't go wrong, voting for myself, voting for Jordan. Obviously, I would like to know whether you vote, but I understand that it is a tough decision here. So thank you again for being here at the time. Go home.
Jordan, same question. Can you say something with your time?
Thank you. Representation is an honor and a privilege, an obligation not to be taken lightly. We're looking at a role like this very differently. It's an honor, honestly, just to be here and see a role like this, it's something I know to believe. This is my starting point, and because of that, I know that I can be a great representative for this community. I think my years of leadership experience, my initial argument, creatively, I think I can do more of all of the college place, and I'm going to do that more effectively as a city council. I'm a builder and a problem solver, someone who looks beyond what I have to work with and help create an outcome that's smarter greater than this of its parts. I believe I can lead the hands and all of the other boardists in council for many years , bringing this college place to do some amazing things. In order to do this, I'll take people's parts creativity, intentionality, and vulnerability. This is how I tackle like three hours of community in the past, as well, and I know I can do that for college place as well. Thank you, and for you, Rob.
Ms. Rob, you're in position three. Now, same thread, if you go first, tell us who you are and why you're running for city council.
Yeah, so I'm a resident of college place, that's my home. I graduated from Walaua, pursued a degree in engineering, and I graduated knowing that I wanted to get a professor, come back and teach. So I went and had my doctorate in engineering. I returned back, and here I'm entering my fourth year of teaching engineering. I'm also pursuing a master's in social work degree to grow my knowledge and expertise. And I recently, oh, oh my God, now, I'm on the college place historic preservation commission, and I was faculty sponsor the last three years for Engineers Without Borders, where I teach my students to go to be easily and listen to what they need and help develop engineering solutions for them. I'm honored for several reasons. First off, college place is my home, and I love this place so much, and our community needs are important to me. I would love to use college solving skills to help serve my home as well. And I'm also setting an example for my students, and my students have walked up to me and felt, asked me about campaigns, I'm welcome to build a courage, voices to be heard, and to show them that the next generation of that, they matter, and that families are part of it. Thank you.
Same question for you. Tell us about yourself and why you're running for city council.
Thank you so much for inviting me today. Almost a decade ago, my ex-fiancee and I chose to make college place our home. We bought our first home here, and the community has been home in every sense of the word. I'm a small business owner. I own W2 photo booth, the first woman-owned photo booth in the valley. I'm also an educator and a dedicated volunteer. I was president of the college place line, I was on the college place utility and transportation advisory commission, and a member of the Koala Creative District planning. I hold a master's degree in public administration and my bachelor's is in public policy. I'm running for city council because I want to put college place first. That means supporting safe and accessible sidewalks, ensuring that our infrastructure meets the needs of a growing community, and strengthening our small businesses so that they know that they're supported. I want to create more opportunities for youth and seniors to thrive. I believe that my experience, my passion, and dedication make me well-equipped to serve and represent college place with integrity and vision.
Well, good to hear you, can you stand up? What do you think is the most important issue facing college place, and what would you plan to do to deal with?
That's a great question. For me, my top priority will be developing strong infrastructure for college place. Infrastructure is the foundation for everything. When our sidewalks are safe and accessible, folks and families can walk together, kids can go to school more safely, and seniors can stay active. When our streets and our water systems and all the storm drains and things that may sound a little bit boring but are super important, when those things are working, residents like myself and business owners have a peace of mind, they can go, they can sleep, and they can know that everything is all right. Right now, college place is very facing the pressure of growth. New developments mean more demands on our roads, more water, sewer, and public spaces, needs for those kinds of things. If we don't plan and invest wisely, we risk falling behind. That's why I will advocate for securing state and federal funding, building strong partnerships with regional agencies within our county, and ensuring that every dollar we spend is tied to those long-term solutions, not just the quick successes. I will also bring a voice to residents in this conversation, making sure that the needs of neighbors, neighborhoods, all of the college place are considered, not just the new development. By focusing on smart planning, accessible sidewalks, and infrastructure that support families and small businesses, we can create a safe, connected, and community that is prepared for the future.
Natalie, what do you think is the most important issue facing college place, and what would you plan to do to deal with?
Yeah, so there are a lot of issues, it's hard to just choose one. We have all really interconnected issues will come and go, but they are interconnected. My top issue that I want to tackle is medical infrastructure. Here in the valley, we just don't have enough physicians and specialists, and we need more resources for physical, behavioral, and mental health. And I recognize that this is an issue that all world communities, and I've witnessed that with community members, my neighbors, and colleagues, and even students, when students are unable to receive by specialist file, it's definitely something that we're experiencing and have experienced ourselves, and I would need it. I've also consulted with some experts on this topic, and it is a interconnected issue. So you need the education in order to get a job, in order to get wages, to get the housing being affordable housing, in order to have medical professionals come into the valley to have that, or the us that live here in the valley, and so it's all interconnected. And I believe the key to this is to work together, to identify the gaps, what resources we have, and what solutions we need in order to work and improve our medical structure. And that's going to be working with our local government, our medical community, employers, nonprofits, and you, the voters. And I've already started to network and get things in motion, and I would love to, I plan to continue that, I want to continue that even after I am elected. Thank you.
Natalie, you're turning in. If you're elected, how would you involve those that you serve in your decision?
Yeah, so I'm currently on the college place historic preservation commission, and I have opportunities to interact with the community. I've covered this, I've greeted up people that I meet and I meet to talk to, have those great conversations, and I want to continue those conversations with the community. I go to the grocery store, I stop by people, ask them about the campaign. Oftentimes, students ask me how to point, what are the issues during college place? They want to know more about where you're studying. Going to the college place market, I have been having a booth out there, and I have these note cards, I've been asking people inside my booth, what do they like about college place, what do they want to see improved, like infrastructure, because here on the top, more support for veterans, more bicycle routes. I've got those lists here, I love hearing the community's input. And so having, I also have cards out on the table, I'd love to carry your ideas and report also. Reaching me by email, by phone, if you guys have one particular preference, I'd love to hear it, but communications, and if I'm elected and I want to go to the market, how about booth, interacting with the community, I plan to meet my neighbors and network with the community, get to know the people that live here even more, branch out and make that happen. Thank you.
Maybe, same question. If you're elected, how would you involve those you serve in your decision?
So I would do with a lot of folks here have said, listen, I too have been at the market, at the Freedom Fest, and just showing up and really listening to what people say and neighbors about what's going right, what's going wrong, and how the city can do better. I really enjoy that our mayor sends out newsletters and involves some updates, and our social media is pretty active, so I think if I were elected, I would continue to, continue with those channels and letting folks know about things. You know, I think a lot of times it's important to share, you know, not only the big things that are happening, but also the small things that, you know, with infrastructure or sewers and things like that are getting taken care of. People may not care about that, but finding a way to make it kind of cool and interesting, I think would be a really great way. I would definitely have my door open to others, as others mentioned. I also truly enjoy speaking to people in person, and so I often have, you know, the movies of harm and other activities that personally have, which is something to do with.
Maybe, if you could close your comments, please.
So I am here to put college place first. When we talk about city issues, I think it's important to look beyond the short-term fixes and really focus on those long-term solutions. Housing shortages are being addressed through city comprehensive plans, and I fully support the sustainable growth, better wages, and stronger quality of life for residents. I also support our small businesses and entrepreneurs like my family. I also support our small businesses and entrepreneurs like I have. They are the backbone of our community. And I want to strengthen and collaborate with folks like Paul Bowen at the Small Business Development Center and the Local Chamber of Commerce, as well as the State Chamber of the Choice Cities. By pooling these resources, listening directly to business owners, and providing targeted support, we can help these small businesses thrive, which in turn, you know, grows our tax base. And then we can fund schools, parks, and public spaces. I've also heard from many residents that there's a lack of things for both kids and seniors to do. My dad, here in the audience today, loves going to the theater center regularly. And I see how valuable that is to have that sense of community. I like to be in that same energy here in College Place. With new community building being planned for our beautiful Lions Park, which I have been part of planning, we have opportunities for our service clubs like the Lions Club and others, nonprofits and local groups to host activities for seniors, as well as seek after school as summer spaces for our youth, in partnerships with Campfire and the YMPA. I will continue to be a leader.
John, I think her goes with the same, please.
Thank you all for coming here tonight. And it shows that you care about your community. For those of you who are watching online, also, thank you so much. Like you all, I am passionate about my community. I love College Place. It is our home. And I want to use my problem-solving skills in order to help solve issues in our community. My problem-solving skills are both practical and empathetic. I have experience working with making real change, working with governments to make real change. I recently got back from Tanzania with some of my students. We've been working for the last three years on a project to bring water to a community in a solar-powered water pump system. And we got over 5,000 people cleaning water in this office. My part in that does not only mention students and uplifting them, but it was also negotiating with the international government. It was working with communities and making sure that their voices are heard and making sure that we work with them rather than just telling them what they need, but making the solution work, making the solution together. So I've got those community communication skills that I want to continue to apply here in College Place. And I would love to earn your vote. Thank you again so much for your time.
Thank you, thanks everyone for coming. That is the end of our program. Before we wrap things up, I did want to take a moment to thank some people that were very hard to pull this off. A lot of volunteers were willing to do this. Thank you, Kerry Isaacson and Barbara Dominic, our moderators, for all the work you've done. Thank you all for the time. I'm always racist tonight. I want to thank the candidates and wish you the best of luck. Thank you all for coming and happy year.